Pursuant to Governor Baker's decrees imposing strict limitations on the number of people who can gather in one place, we're doing this this way by Zoom and by phone. All the information on logging in is on the town website if anyone's interested. We are recording the meeting and a reminder that the recording is not a public document. And with that, I think we can jump right in. So good evening, everyone. First item is the warrant for the 2020 state election. Liz, are we are we are we doing a vote on that and then sign?
I would just take a vote to endorse it, yes. And it's the document that the town clerk submitted. So it's available in the office to be signed anytime this week. It's up on top of the file cabinet.
Well, I guess we should go ahead and have a state election this year. So I'm going to make a motion that we endorse and sign the warrant for the 2020 state election.
One second.
Okay, all those in or any discussion. So we'll do it by roll call, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes, all right. So I think we need at least two signatures on that. I'll be in tomorrow to sign. John, will you be able to?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, very good. So we have a fairly light agenda. Next item is update from the Highway Department, including Ring Road and Main intersection. So this is part of the new endeavor that we're, the Board of Selectmen, hoping to meet with all board chairs, heads of department through the year. So part of this is a chance to just check in with Rob and Rob to check in with us. And we'll get to that part. The other part is we do have, I think we could call it, three different highway projects at various stages of being initiated. And so we wanted to check in on those. My understanding is we have the speed zone at Ring and Main and over at Winnetuxent and Prospect that we have approved, and we wanted to get an update on the thinking of that. The second project is we are at the very beginning of exploring limiting heavy truck through traffic on our non-numbered roads. And then our, the third piece is the potential redesign of Ring Road, Main Street intersection. My understanding at the last meeting, oh, Nate, welcome. Do you have a particular things to talk about or bring to our attention, Nate? Just so.
I just missed you all terribly, and I wanted to hang with you for a little bit.
That's so sweet.
I actually had a life.
If it's okay, I would like five minutes of your time at some point.
All right, you know, if you'd like, I can put the highway thing on hold and so that you don't have to spend too much time. Why don't, why don't we just have you go ahead with what you have on your mind?
Oh, well, thank you. I appreciate that. I am just coming before you this evening to ask the board's support for the FinComs efforts as we go into the budget process for our next fiscal year with respect to getting more and better reporting and detailed reporting out of each of the different departments within the town and and from the financial arm of the town. We had another situation as we were closing out fiscal '20 where there were several expenses that came to us last minute that we were sort of, I don't want to say blindsided, but they were unexpected from our perspective. And we felt that some of them perhaps could have waited until the next fiscal year or been dealt with differently if we had known about them ahead of time. So this is the second year in a row that a number of expenses have come to us very late in the process. And so we we would like to be able to plan for them a little bit better as we go forward this year. So we're asking your support in getting the word out to the different departments and chairs of the committees and such that that they work with us and and with the town administrator on monitor and the accountant, obviously, on monitoring their budgets on a more regular basis and letting us know when they feel as though they're getting toward the end of their their budget for the year. Obviously, COVID sort of threw everything out the window. We had attempted to start this process last year, and we implemented a new process for reserve fund transfers. We created a new form with Liz's help. So we're just looking to start that up again and hopefully have a little bit better success, you know, pandemic willing this year. So we're just looking for support, and we just wanted to let you know that that was what was on our mind as we're going forward, and we're starting to ramp up for for the next budget preparatory season.
Do you see that support as certainly word of mouth, but is a formal letter to departments from Liz and/or from the Board of Selectmen, something along those lines?
Liz is waiting to jump in. I'll let her go.
I think that a formal letter would be helpful. Mark, maybe that's something that you and I could both sign, and maybe we could even get Nate's signature on it as well, so the two board chairs and myself. But I think that the other piece of this puzzle, and it's something that John Trainer and I have been talking about for a while now, I think it's time to reinvigorate the discussion with the financial office as far as getting better reporting out to these different department heads and board chairs so that they actually know where they stand. The process, I see it as being sort of twofold. So maybe a letter from us, I'm happy to work on drafting it. I can even work on that tomorrow, and I'll get it to you and Nate if that's how you want to proceed. And if everybody's good with it, we can all sign it and get it out to people. But I think that the other portion of this is department heads need to know where they stand and get that information on a more regular basis directly from our town accountant. And I think that that ties in with some larger scale efforts that both John Trainer and I were looking to put forward for this next budget cycle, him as being the liaison to some of the financial offices. We were looking at better reporting, also tasking the town accountant with going out and maybe looking into some different types of software that might be more helpful, a little more user friendly. So I see the process as being twofold.
Yeah, and just to add to that, we had, we had asked last year to get some sort of regular reporting on where, whether it was quarterly or, you know, ideally monthly would be great, but we would be happy with quarterly on where each of the sort of a progress report on where the the budget stands at the start of every fiscal quarter so that we would know as we're anticipating the the budget requests for the next fiscal year, we would sort of know year to date where everybody is standing so far. And as Liz said, you know, we, they, the both the department heads would know where they stand, and we would certainly know where they would all be if there was any danger of overruns for whatever reason, you know, unforeseen or whatever. We just felt that the more, the more data we had to work with, the better we'd be able to function and sort of preparing for for next year. And the other piece of it, too, we also thought it would be helpful to us if we could get a regular update on the revenue side of things as well, because we are anticipating that there will be revenue shortfalls this year as well due to, you know, tax, you know, whatever, not as many taxes coming in or 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 other, you know, unanticipated drop-offs in revenue.
It's a long overdue, Nate, and we owe it to you and to the other departments to start to get our act together. And I think Liz and I will try to work on one facet of it to make sure that the financial people at least are supporting you.
Great, thank you. That's, that's, that's all we had. We just, I was supposed to have done this by now, so I didn't want to go before my board next week and not tell them that I missed it another month. So thank you for indulging me.
So we made you, you made your goal.
Mark, can I make a quick comment? So what we envisioning is sort of what we do in the school, which is that each time we get together, we don't get together monthly anymore, but it's, it's every four, four to six weeks that we get together, and we sit down and look through, you know, Christine Haley, where we are against each other and whether we're over or under, and if there's any places where we're over, she is telling us whether there is a, whether we can be covered by the end of the year by some other line item. And we end up understanding that we're on track each time we're meeting. And I think that's what you're looking at, Nate, for the other departments. They have the ability to to see things coming because there's, things are going to happen. But
Of course.
The bigger issue of when they show up on July 16th and say, yeah, we needed 15% more than what we thought we spent, can you write a check? That's sort of the issue, yeah.
Well, and in some cases, it's even, you know, retroactive, you know, it's, well, the bill's been paid, can you, can you transfer the money now? So, you know, which, I mean, you know, we, we understand and, you know, stuff happens. We get it, but we're just trying to, we're just trying to do our due diligence here. And I think you summed it up very well. We, you know, we'd like to, as you have a regular update, we would like to get the same.
So I think we surely hear you. Some of this is kind of structural and systemic and may take a little while, but certainly moving in that direction makes sense, and I think we're all dedicated to give a go with that.
Great, okay. I won't waste any more of your time. Thank you again for letting me speak.
We thank you.
Take care.
All right, so back where we were, we do have a check in tonight with the Highway Department Superintendent, but we're also kind of checking in on on the three projects, the speed zones in two places, the initial research on heavy truck restriction, and then the design on Ring Road and Main. My understanding at the, at the last meeting was that we decided on Ring and Main, there had been some talk of starting a new committee, and at the last meeting, my understanding was we were going to hold off on that, give the speed zone thing a chance to do its thing and see how that went, and then make a decision on whether further redesign and how to fund it would take place. So I guess just to finish introducing this, we did receive today an estimate that Rob had gotten from some engineers. My sense is that we may not need all of this at this point. I was kind of hoping that on the speed zones, at most, what we might need is is some collaboration and understanding on where we post the signs and what we could do creatively for painting the road to bring attention to the speed zones. So that's where things stand. Maybe, should I turn it over to Rob first? And you have anything you want to add to where we are on those three projects, Rob?
Well, I had been working with Jeff Bandini from McMahan on the Main Street and Ring Road. The only reason why I was turning towards an engineer was he might be able to put us in more legal directions as far as measurements go and signage goes, so the town might not be as liable if something were to happen. As far as the heavy truck goes, we can't just have the numbered roads be truck only. It's too, too much on the town. You have to provide extra, you know, through streets for when they're going to go, if you would like. I can start to work on some select streets, get a, get a study going as far as traffic goes and see if it is a feasible thing.
That one, I'd be real interested in, I, you know, there's a lot on your plate, and I feel like we keep adding more on your plate. So I think that one maybe is surely the less important, but I think we can, if we keep moving on as time allows, maybe in the cold winter months when it's not snowing too much and the grass isn't growing, there'd be a little more time. But from my perspective, when you can, exploring what we could do about limiting some of the heavy truck traffic, particularly on the really smaller roads, would make sense. I guess my concern about the engineer quote that you got is that there's a fair amount there more than we need specifically for the safety zone issue. I wonder if we couldn't narrow the scope. I mean, I'm totally in favor, as much input as we can get and engineering input makes sense. Just my thought, fellow Selectmen, feel free to chime in.
John, have you seen a large increase in traffic? Are you, is there any way you've been able to look at that, or is it just kind of nebulous? I'm sorry, did anybody hear me?
I can hear you.
Can you hear me, John?
Was that question to me?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Is he a traffic engineer, too?
No, but I mean, I mean, given where I am on, really, I'm 58. I mean, there's always truck traffic.
No, I was thinking more of the school that, you know, are you hearing anything in terms of the traffic to the school?
No, I mean, I think the issue there is going to be that, you know, you, you have high volume of traffic for, by the school, a pickup and drop off. And so you're not going to hear many complaints unless it happens to be directly at the time that that's happening, which is probably not, not that much. Because as we've been out there, you know, over various election times, you know, it's 20 minutes, the world is a buzz, and then everything is quiet. It's probably elongated now with with the new drop off and pickup procedures. But I have not had any complaints or have anyone raised concerns on the smaller roads or on Center Street in front of Bennett on Ring Road there.
Some of the truck traffic I see comes from, I believe, the Randall operation, the farm. And, you know, that's, it goes with farming. He's got the right to compost and take it out.
I believe a while back, we had something set up with Jeff Randall where he had to go through Kingston off of Ring Road, and I believe that was shut down because Kingston didn't want to accept all of this traffic.
That's true. Kingston said, hey, no way. I don't blame him.
So in my mind, the immediate question is how do we move forward on the speed zone issue? And I, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of feeling like the engineer quote from McMahan just had more in it than we need specifically for the speed zone. I may be wrong, and I may be naive. I do hear you, Rob, that we want as much information as possible. I'm just wondering if we have to spend that much, at least initially, for the speed zone part.
If you'd like, I can reach out to him and see if he can come up with maybe less of a scope of work at a lower price, or maybe you and I can get together and we can discuss some other options that we can do in-house.
I would be, I will see what my fellow Selectmen say. I would be very interested in a smaller scope for the engineering project with the intent that when and if we get to the place that we do want to consider a redesign, that of course, it would be much larger scope at that point. And hopefully, I, we would include in the decision to do that a funding source.
Would that? I'm not opposed to going through the winter and, you know, trying the speed zone, but I do, I think that's just a Band-Aid, quite frankly, and we'll see what happens with it.
Well, I think we'll find out. Would you be okay with Rob seeking a smaller scope project from the engineer?
Yeah, Rob feels okay.
And Christine, would you be all right with that?
Sure, I'm okay with that, too. I just wonder if, you know, that's where we should be putting all the money, or, you know, should we be reaching out to somebody that that does this type of work, and maybe they would have suggestions for us? I don't know if, what is it, Liddell does, or anybody else that does roadwork and paving might have suggestions.
All right, the only reason why McMahan was, this is their specialty, traffic coming, crosswalks and stuff like that.
All right, then if that's their specialty, yeah, I'd say definitely try to pare it down, work with Mark, and let's come up with something with a tighter scope for basically just safety zones.
Great. So I think we're in agreement on that, Rob. Rob, I'm really glad to work with you. Like all projects, particularly in town government, this seems to be much more complicated than we ever intended, but I think this is a worthwhile project. So if you can keep at that and don't hesitate to contact me. And I, we really appreciate your time on this. You've been at a lot of meetings lately. Anything other than than these projects, then, you want to check in on? Anything you'd like us to know?
Not really much. I mean, we're getting ready for our winter season. We've started our salt and sand bids, started to get in some of the snowplow contractors. We're just basically getting ready for leaves and the changeover of snow.
Great. Rob's been doing an amazing job, if I can express a personal opinion. All right, anything else for Rob, then?
Rob, just one last question. Is there anything that we can do to help you?
Not at the moment. I think everything's going fairly smoothly on my end.
Great, all right. I think you're doing a great job, too. I completely concur with Mark. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thanks, Rob. We're going to try to have a meeting without you someday so you can have dinner at a regular hour.
Well, thank you for saying I've been doing a good job. It's nice to hear that.
You bet. All right, be well, sir. Thank you. So let's see, next agenda item, appointment to the Silver Lake School Committee?
Yeah, so why don't I start off? It was a number of weeks ago, because everything blends together in our current lives. But we had brought up that we had two folks volunteer to serve on the Silver Lake School Committee, and because I didn't have anything else to do, I thought, why not? On the opportunity to get a few folks together and have a discussion with each of the individuals. So Mike Anton and Jason Fraser and myself had that opportunity this past week. Joining us tonight is Lukas Kawalski. He is one of the two individuals, and he is who we would like to proceed with tonight to appoint to Silver Lake. The other gentleman, Rob Montgomery, we kind of wished we had two spots because they both were excellent candidates. Both are very interested in being part of working on the school committees. And so I'm keeping, and I told him this, and this is now his, his fault. I told Rob the other day that now he's on my list, and the next opening that we have on either of the school committees, he is going to be the first person that we come to. So, you know, I think we, I thank both of the candidates for taking the time to meet with us. They're both excellent, but Lukas is who we would like to move ahead with. And I'm going to stop talking now because it's really not my choice at all. It's Mike's as the, as the other member of the Silver Lake School Committee and the Board of Selectmen to to move ahead, so.
So just a procedural thing, do we all vote together, Mike and the three Selectmen? So that it'll take three out of four for an approval? And have you made clear, John, to the two candidates that when they sign up for one committee, we immediately recruit them to five or six others, and they won't have a life for themselves for like a decade or so?
I think we made it clear that you will try, and I have already provided them with some better advice than I've had to resist.
Okay. So Board of Selectmen, do you have questions for the candidate?
I would just like to hear the gentleman a thumbnail sketch because you have a very interesting background, I believe, having immigrated to the United States.
I don't know if it's interesting. Thank you very much. I would like to welcome everybody first. It's nice seeing you guys and hearing the first meeting. My name is Lukas, and I'm 38 years old, originally from Poland, but have been in the United States in the last 12 years, in New York, New Jersey, Ohio, and now I arrived in Plimpton. First, I lived in the north of Boston, in Metford, and last year I arrived here, and I love this place so far. I would like to do something for a school for the kids, and that's pretty much it. Thank you very much.
Who are your children, Lukas?
I don't have any children.
Okay. That's unusual, that we have people want to get on the school committee.
So
Welcome. That's, that's great.
What attracts, what about the school committee attracted you?
About school committee, like I said, I would like to volunteer and do something for the school, and I always wanted to do something for the education. I was a teacher. Originally, I'm a musician. I was teaching kids in the kindergarten and would like to help out. I'm, I'm a tough guy, I'm a fighter, and I will make sure that I will, I will fight for kids and especially for our Plimpton kids.
Any other questions for the candidate? Would you, so one from me, would you consider yourself a fiscal conservative or more open-fisted in that regard?
What does it mean? What is open?
Oh, less stingy.
Like my personality or I don't understand you quite?
I'm sorry, I, it's a totally muddled question, so thank God you didn't understand it because it was unintelligible. School and actually all town services tend to be a balance between what we'd like to do and how much money we have, and it takes a balancing act to balance those two different things, being frugal and at the same time present a service. Are you comfortable dealing with that challenge and dealing with that kind of balancing?
John already introduced me a little bit, and I know that education is a huge part of a, of a Plimpton expense, so it's very important, and of course, I will, I will balance, and I will try to do the best.
I think you're going to bring a unique perspective, and that may be very interesting.
I hope so.
All right, any other questions? All right, so I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Lukas Kawalski to the Silver Lake Regional School Committee as a member from Plumpton.
I'll sign the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, roll call, vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes. Well, welcome aboard, Lukas. We really appreciate it. You sound like a really interesting guy. I think we look forward to getting to know you more along the way. Thank you for helping out. Thank you for loving Plumpton. We really appreciate that.
I haven't even started, so let me do something first. Thank you.
This is the honeymoon. Savor the honeymoon.
I shouldn't have said yes from you, Mike.
Mark, I think we should get Mike on record that he's voting yes for this.
Oh, forgive me. I'm so sorry.
No worries, no worries, no worries, Mark. Yes, I am, I am a yes, so.
All right, so it's unanimous, four to nothing. Oh, I'm so embarrassed. All right, four to nothing, and we welcome the new member. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Very good.
I'll be talking with you soon, guys.
Okay, let's see. School district information and updates. I wonder who that is?
Yeah, and so as part of that, too, will we be able to get? Yep, and so as part of that, too, will we be able to get the papers for you and John perhaps to sign tomorrow? So that we can get Lukasz appointed, actually sworn in, because there's a committee meeting on Thursday.
Liz, could you have Bree do that first thing? And I think John and I both can get in tomorrow and sign.
Are you all set to do an appointment slip?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Now they can.
Yeah, that'll be ready the first thing in the morning.
So is this a three-year term?
No, appointed for one year.
Okay.
Then the position will go on the ballot, which will be a two-year position in May. Because it's an elected position, you can only appoint to the next election.
Okay, so his appointment is till Election Day?
Correct.
Okay. So Bree, can you get that in the morning, and John and I can, I think we both can get in tomorrow and sign? Does that work, John?
Sure.
Okay. Great. Beautiful. All right, now.
So, school update. Well, from the Denit perspective, we're still in school. Yeah. The numbers in the surrounding community are going up from a COVID perspective, which isn't totally ideal. Particular concern at the moment is Kingston, which has been in the red for the last two weeks from the Department of Public Health. So what comes out this Wednesday will be important for the school and the Board of Health in Kingston, as well as Desi, to figure out whether we can stay open in the Kingston schools. But so far, Plimpton has stayed really on the lower end of things. And we haven't had any specific issues in the Denit. Let's see what else. We are continuing to struggle with substitutes at the Denit. Because of course, we're trying to encourage folks, if they're even potentially not feeling well, to not show up. This is no longer the environment where we can, you know, take two Tylenol and head to school or head to work, because we're trying to make sure that we don't bring anything into the building. We are trying to do some, we're trying to do some work to encourage folks from the community to step up to help substitute. And we'll see whether that has any legs before our next school committee meeting. And if so, if it doesn't, then we may have to move ahead with the request that we had to do full-time in-building substitute, which they've done in Halifax as well as at Silver Lake. And what that means is that there's someone on staff to be able to fill in for at least one person out, rather than it being the librarian or the counselor, or whoever else needs to sort of put their normal day job aside and jump in, because we don't have someone else in the building. So, and given the way that everything has been set up, you know, we're kind of stretched for resources, because we are teaching both kids in school and out of school at the same time. And so that kind of strains it, particularly at Denit, where we have, you know, a smaller group of staff. So, but everything, otherwise, things are going pretty well. We ordered laptops for the teachers instead of their Chromebooks. And I've heard that they actually have come in, and we have the invoice, and we're going to do the warrants this week. So we'll be able to submit that for CARES Act funds, which is excellent, and it should really help the teachers be able to do their job a lot better. And then the last piece that I would just toss out there, I was thinking that it might be useful in one of the next couple of meetings for the selectmen, to perhaps have one or two of the staff from the Denit join the call for 10 or 15 minutes, just to give you guys an idea of what it's like to a day in the life of a teacher in this current environment. Because I think it's important for us to sort of understand how different things are compared to where they were, you know, last October. And there, you know, you have a whole group of teachers that are basically first-year teachers, trying to figure out what works and what doesn't, in order to be able to get the kids in the building, to which the kids are reacting very positively. So any doubts that we may have had, whether we should be fully remote or, you know, hybrid in person, I think we all feel pretty good that we've done what we can to be able to try and balance that. It's still not as satisfactory as having the kids there 100% of the time. But I just thought that if we could have them come by, it would probably be useful for folks to hear really what they're doing for the students of town.
I would love to hear from, my son is a teacher, special needs at East Bridgewater, and I know the stress that's going on, and I would love to hear from them, see how they're doing.
Would you, John, like to invite a couple people to, and present during the school update?
Yeah, yeah, I can work it out with Liz, and we can figure out what, which meeting makes the most sense. And then I'll reach back out to Ann Walker, who's the president of the Teachers Association. And I'd already mentioned it to her, and she thought it was a great idea. So they would, they would love to be able to come and just give you an idea of the work they're doing.
Very good.
Any, any questions?
Okay, thank you, John. Council on Aging update?
Yeah, so what's going on as we delve into what needs to be done? So I've been on the Brown Bag Program, which is run by the Greater Boston Food Bank. We have about 30 people, around 23 to 25 people at Woodlands, that once a month, they get a food bag. And then we have not quite 10 people, somewhere in the six to 10 people in Plimpton at various houses. So we're taking a look at that and understanding how that works. We'll be talking about the Senior Work Off Program, also the Plowing and the Handyman Program. So there's three programs we're going to try to get on top of and make sure that we get a newsletter that explains to people what's available to them. We got the commercial freezer. I don't know when the electrician's coming in. Liz, do you have any idea yet?
October 30th.
November, October 30?
October 30th.
Great. That's going to be a real plus for us. And I've seen the picture. I saw him wheeling it in the other day, and it looks huge, so that's great. We need some drivers. We've got the, you know, the wheelchair assisted van. And then we've got the regular van, and I think Jim is qualified to drive both. But we need some help for him. He has a set schedule of people who go for dialysis. And that takes up three mornings a week. So it doesn't give a lot of time for the other medical needs that are in town. Town Property Committee is working on the lift, so I think that's moving forward. And the Council on Aging Board seems to be very invigorated, and now we just need a director. So hopefully, somebody will respond to the job description, and we'll see where that takes us. I am finding, though, that putting in around 25 hours a week, and some of that is because just my inexperience of having to go into and look at everything. I think we should recognize that when we get a director, it's much more than a 10-hour-a-week position. But we can't pay more than that. So whoever takes it's going to have to realize that we get paid for 10 hours and work 20. That's just the fact of life with almost everything we do in town with all these boards. But I do think people are willing to work with the director when we find that person. So all in all, very positive about what's taken place. Just like to see it happen quicker. Any questions I can answer?
Just a comment, Mr. Trainer. Thank you so much for jumping into the breach. We all know what it's like to turn a 10-hour thing into like a full-time job. Sounds like being a selectman, actually, a little. But thank you so much for your fine efforts there.
Thanks.
Okay. So requests for the use of town property from PAYS. Liz, are you?
Yep. So PAYS has requested to use the Denit parking lot for their Track-O-Treat event, and that would be on Sunday, October 25. The event time itself is really runs from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., but they need some time to set up. And they have gone on Board of Health and have come up with all of the protocols to hopefully make this a safe and fun event for everybody.
And have we had the sign-off from police and fire and all that?
I believe that they were deferring at first to the Board of Health and to the selectmen, but we can certainly circulate that. And if you elect to sign it, it could be with the caveat that they also sign off.
Have you seen the Board of Health recommendations? And if so, does it sound like there's a fair degree of safety?
To me, it does. I know that a considerable amount of thought went into this. Initially, it was a no from the Board of Health until they realized what it was that was actually being proposed. And they ended up being able to come to an agreement with PAYS as to all of the protocols that would be taken. So they are now supportive of the event.
Beautiful. I think our Board of Health has done an amazing job in erring on the side of safety and caution. So I'll make a motion that we sign the request for the use of town property by PAYS, contingent on the other permissions being granted. So I need a second.
I'll second the motion.
Any, any further discussion? Okay, roll call, vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes. Okay. So I guess we can sign that tomorrow, too.
Mark, I thought one thing, I'll talk to Liz about this when we get together later. I think school, and I, and the school committee won't be meeting, so I think this is fine. But I think the school committee is supposed to sign off on use of anything that's the school thing. But I don't think that, I wouldn't knock something off on this anyways. But it seems like they're hard to create a good event and try and do something in difficult times. Halloween, but I do probably want to make sure that we have, however, we want to figure this out, so that we make sure we get all the right approvals. But consider, consider the school committee on it anyways. So that shouldn't, we shouldn't stop anything like that.
I'm wondering if we should edit our use-of-town-property form and have it be a bit more location-specific, because you bring up an excellent point, John. I mean, have events taking place at the school on school property without the school committee being aware of it. And honestly, you know, Peter Veneto should probably be aware of it as well, just for the sake of information, if anything else. So I'm wondering if maybe we should edit that form a bit going forward and just make it so that some different entities become involved if and when their grounds are in the mix.
When does the school committee meet, John?
We meet on the second, so that will be after the event. So there's, I, as the chair, and given that, I think there's probably more concern about this event than there would normally be due to COVID, right? I mean, this wouldn't normally be a big deal, right? I do, as the school committee chair, have the ability to make decisions regarding anything COVID. Lucky me. But I think, you know, I wouldn't hold anything up here. This seems like it's a, it's a really well-planned event, and they've worked really hard at that. I think this is just one of those places where I say, wow, if we don't, this is an opportunity for us to look back and make sure we're doing things right procedurally, so that something else doesn't happen down the road. I'm not concerned here at all.
Thank you. Very good. Okay.
I can have that form edited and add John to it in my computer. And then add the school committee in.
I think that would, that would be a great idea, Bree. And also, if we could please forward John and Peter Veneto the information for this particular event, so that they're aware of it.
Yeah, that'll be fine. John, would you have time to come in and sign?
Yeah, if you want me to, I can stop up tomorrow.
Okay, great. Fine, I'll get it done, and we'll edit that and add the school committee.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay. Town Administrator update. I bet that's Liz.
So we're plugging along with all things COVID-19 related. We've, in working with the Emergency Management Agency and the Board of Health, we've elected to close the townhouse to regular town business, both on Election Day and on that Wednesday immediately following. And this is to minimize the number of people in the building on Election Day. And the following day, we're actually having the building professionally disinfected by Servpro of Plymouth. And this decision was also welcomed by the town clerk's office, because they were going to be closing to regular town business anyway on those days. So it just seems like a good decision overall. And it's one that some of my colleagues from other towns, if they're holding elections on town property, they're opting to do the same thing. It should help with parking and foot traffic in the building. And as of right now, we're putting kind of the finishing touches on the plan for Election Day. I think at this time, we're still going to opt to have somebody present on-site from Plimpton Fire, if not for anything else, just simply to alert people coming in. If somebody is unaware that the building is closed, just to kind of let them know that, so that we don't have people wandering around the building. So we're working on that right now. The town clerk and Steve Sorrow and I also met today, and we've figured out the placement for the ballot box. So that has been bolted into place outside. It's a temporary fixture, but it'll make it so people can drop and go if they received mail-in ballots, and they don't want to put them in the mail. They'll be free to drop those off at any hour of the day. And the town clerk was going to work on signage for that, and we were going to see about getting it laminated, just so that it's weatherproof, at least for the next, next couple of weeks. And then we'll take the box out after the election, and we'll store it for future use. So so far, so good. Everything's been going smoothly with that. And otherwise, we've just been monitoring things. The fire chief put in for another submittal for CARES reimbursement. That submittal totals right around $173,000. There were some big-ticket items on there. One large submittal on behalf of the schools, and then a couple of large ones for the community paramedicine program. So we're awaiting reimbursement on those things, but so far, everything's moving along. That's really it for my update.
Thanks. Anything in correspondence?
We do have something here. It is from the Department of Public Utilities, and it's a notice of public comment hearing regarding a new transmission line to be installed in Carver, Plimpton, and Kingston. There is a public comment hearing scheduled for October 27 at 7:00 p.m. And there's Zoom information for it. So I think the best thing to do for this is if we scan it and we put it on the town website, and maybe we can also post it with the town clerk's office, just in case anyone from the public is curious, and they want to log in to that public comment hearing that is being put on by the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities. They'll have the information to do so.
Very good. So before we go to minutes for our next meeting, anyone in particular we'd like to invite in as far as department head or committee chairs? Or shall we consider the school guests that John will bring as our, as the people we meet?
I would support that. I would support that.
What's that?
I would support that.
Okay. All right. Now the pressure's really on John Williamson.
One thing, um, we need to talk about at some point is, uh, the meeting, I think Liz, with uh, the electrical, the select, the company, Mark, you and I, with the Wendy Jones, where it's on. So maybe we can put that on the agenda next time. Does that, that sound good and interesting?
Yep, I think we can put that on the agenda. Actually, I'm hoping maybe we'll have a proposal or some information from the fellow by then, but, um, yeah, I think that's something we definitely want to pursue.
Yeah, we wanted John to also attend as the town properties chair.
Um, so all the more reason. So regardless of whether we have information, we should put that on the agenda for next time. He looks concerned. We'll fill you in along the way. We want.
It's going to cost more than we think, and that's just the basis of it, but I'm accepting that.
No, I, I understand. And I, I'd put it differently. I think that there would be less reward, proposed reward than we think, but you know, that's sort of saying the same thing, but we'll see.
They're, they're, they're both there. They run along together.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. Anything else before minutes? All right, minutes of 10:5. Uh, anyone have anything? I had a couple.
I thought the amended minutes looked good.
Okay, I had a couple of things. On the first page, on the Board of Assessor update, uh, uh, there's a line in there about the process underway with Middlebauer petition, petitioning the legislature, um, to lease portion of the land. I think at the end of that sentence, we should add for recreational purposes because that's the reason we're going to the state to begin with, the, a change in use from conservation to recreational purposes. I, I can bring this into you, Liz, tomorrow, if that's all right with the selectmen. And then the very top of the second page, uh, it says, "In order to connect with the northwestern and southeastern area, portions of the project we need to cross." And I think that should read, "they need to cross," since it's the company that's doing it. And that's all I had. So, uh, everybody okay with those two edits?
Okay.
Yes.
All right, uh, I make a motion to approve the minutes of 10:5 with the edits. Uh, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, uh, roll call, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Russo, yes. All right.
I have a, um, minutes issue, uh, with the executive session minutes. We have three meetings open back to August 10th, which is outside the, uh, sort of the rules of state sets. Liz, can we have a, an executive session meeting just to approve minutes?
We could certainly do that if you want prior to the next one.
I mean, it would take five or 10 minutes and we get it.
Yeah, I think that might be a good idea to clean that up. Um, I took from Greg, Greg Corbo's presentation though, that anything to do with personnel matters or that could compromise the town's negotiating position, even on future positions or issues going forward, um, that those don't necessarily need to be released. Um, but he did indicate in particular that like land transactions, for example, if you did an executive session pertaining to those, once the land has been purchased or the transaction has been completed, that it's a good idea to just release those to the public. So I'm wondering if we could go back and say for any that were pertaining to Two Brooks Preserve and Prospect Road, um, those transactions have been completed. So I don't see any reason why you couldn't release those. So maybe we could schedule one, get all the minutes approved from the executive sessions, and then maybe you could take a vote to release those particular ones relative to Two Brooks Preserve.
I think it'd be real good to clean those up. It should only take a few minutes, um, of meeting time. It'll take a little more time collecting them all. Shall we do that in two weeks?
Sure.
Great. Okay. Okay, we're up to raves.
All right, I'll go first. Um, my rave would be Paze and, um, and the Board of Health and, um, how they were able to work through their issues so that, um, the kids have, um, a little sense of normalcy with, um, with Halloween, at least having, um, some type of an event. So I'm very grateful for Paze for bringing those forward and for, um, the Board of Health and Paze to, to work through their issues to make sure that we were able to, um, to make this happen for the kids.
Nice. Um, so I have two, uh, raves. One is for the, uh, Bylaw Review Committee. I, I sit in on a lot of committee meetings and, um, I've been sitting in on that one lately, trying to, uh, help coordinate a little bit their efforts and the efforts of other committees. And unlike some committees, when the statement comes up, who would like to help us with XYZ project? And then there's dead silence. Um, at the Bylaw Review Committee, people are jumping up saying, "I missed the last meeting. I didn't get an assignment and I want to do that and I want to do that." It's so refreshing. It's quite beautiful. Um, so I'm appreciative of that. Um, my other rave is a poem by Walt Whitman that is named "Election Day, November 1884." Um, it's a poem that talks about the physical beauty of America, but talks even more so about the beauty of elections and the opportunity that we have. He uses the term "the still small voice vibrating, America's choosing day, the quadrennial choosing." And he ends, "These stormy gusts and winds waif precious ships, swelled Washingtons, swelled Jeffersons, swelled Lincoln's sails." So a long-winded way for frustration and difficulties, please take the opportunity to vote. It's, uh, one of the biggest gifts we have.
So my rave continues to be for the volunteers who seem to come out of the woodwork. Somehow we run this town on, uh, volunteer rep. It's great. It's nice to have the professionalism of, uh, Liz and Matt, Steve, but, uh, it's the volunteers that are the backbone.
Beautiful. Liz?
I, I have a rave for tonight.
Wow, great.
I would like to rave about Fire Chief Steve Silva, um, his wife Deb and Cheryl Amira from town. The three of them spent their Saturday evening rearranging the Council on Aging pantry at the townhouse. Um, we saw some shelving that we wanted to order for the pantry to kind of go along with the new freezer. Steve rushed over to Home Depot, picked that up, set it up, and then his wife and Cheryl came in and spent the better part of their Saturday evening at the townhouse setting everything up. And everything looked so wonderful in there this morning, to the point that Jane Pacico, who works for the Council on Aging, was nearly brought to tears by how wonderful it was. Um, so the three of them definitely deserve a rave.
That's great.
Very nice.
Let's get that one in the paper.
Yeah, it really should be. That's, that was quite the effort that they undertook.
Any last words?
It was beautiful. Came out absolutely beautiful.
All right, I'll make a motion that we adjourn. Looking forward to being back together in two weeks. Second, do I hear a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, roll call, uh, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Um, Mrs. Joy, I'm getting tired.
Yeah.
Mr. Russo, I wish everyone a good couple of weeks. Please be well, everyone.
Good night.